Well, the City of Kewanee Common Council Meeting to Order for June tenth, twenty twenty four. Let the record show Brown is absent excused. Please stand for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the City of Kewanee Common Council Meeting to Order for June tenth, twenty twenty four. Let the record show the Brown is absent.
I don't know.
Please stand. Okay, item three, approval of the May thirteenth, twenty twenty four Common Council minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item four, hearings, a public hearing regarding the repeal and replacement of Article two of Chapter thirty four of the municipal code pertaining to floodplain zoning. Notice is hereby given that the Common Council for the City of Kewanee will conduct a public hearing on Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty four, at six P M. in the Common Council chambers at the Kewanee Municipal Building, four oh one Fifth Street, Kewanee, Wisconsin, to hear public comment regarding proposed ordinance to repeal and replace Article two of Chapter thirty four of the municipal code of the City of Kewanee, Wisconsin, pertaining to the floodplain zoning pursuant to Section one, three, six, one of the National Flood Insurance Act of nineteen sixty eight and pursuant to the requirements of forty four C F R, part sixty point three, D and E. So he's the meeting, the hearing is currently open then, or do we need a motion to open here?
Uh, you just, you just decided to say that the public hearing is now open. For comments, anybody has.
Anyone have anything to speak regarding the repeal and replace Article two of Chapter thirty four? Is there anyone here that would like to speak regarding the floodplain? Seeing that there is no one here, then we will move on. Or close the public hearing. Item five, public comment communications. There's a three minute time limit per person. If there was anyone here that wishes to speak under public comment, please come forward and state your name and your address. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak under public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to item six. Boards, commissions, committee and staff reports. Public property committee, personnel committee, plan commission, finance committee, public works committee and staff reports. Any questions on any of the reports?
You'll need to, but.
Is there a motion to approve the reports?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item seven, mayor's report. I had the privilege to attend the Rotary Person of the Year in Sloven. Uh, Jeff Kleiman was this year's honoree. Uh, I was honored to present him with a key to the city as his tradition. Um, sure, most of you, if not all of you, know Jeff Kleiman, and he has certainly served, uh, Kewanee, uh, very proudly for many, many years in many different capacities. So congratulations once again to Jeff Kleiman. Item eight, unfinished business, eight A, adopt ordinance number six, four, nine, dash, two, zero, two, four, repealing and replacing Article two of Chapter thirty four floods of the City of Kewanee Municipal Code. That was what we just had the hearing on.
Uh, this is, um, this was a, a draft that was reviewed in draft form by the Plan Commission in April and May. Uh, was a recommendation to move forward the public hearing and adoption. Per D N R requirements, the ordinance needs to be adopted with enough time to meet a submission deadline of July twenty eight, uh, including all additional items as required for proof of adoption receipt. Uh, this ordinance is very similar to what is currently on the books. Most of the changes are relatively minor, so though some changes are slight increases in regulatory specificity. Um, significant changes include, uh, the new regulations no longer allow for new development of floodplain areas to increase the mapped flood elevation. What this means is that any new development would have to provide increased storage of floodwaters as opposed to simply allowing a new increase, a new structure to increase the flood elevation by any level whatsoever. Uh, community rating system, which is a cooperative process with FEMA and D N R to provide continual management of floodplain areas. It is essentially a check against abuses of unapproved floodplain developments, so other properties in or near flood hazards are protected. Included in these community rating system allows, including us in that system allows for some reduced requirements in return for additional vigilance on the part of the city. Act one seventy five, adopted by the state twenty nineteen, this act modified the requirements for nonconforming structures currently located in the floodplain. Current practice is that changes or modifications to nonconforming uses or structures exceeding fifty percent of the present equalized assessment value are not allowed unless the structure is changed to a conforming structure with a conforming use. Act one seventy five allows for changes to nonconforming structures regardless of cost, providing that additional requirements are adhered to. And then the current regulations don't include specific requirements for anyone seeking development of floodplain, which makes guidance difficult to achieve. Uh, the new regulations include much more specific guidance on what to submit to FEMA via, uh, the D N R to attempt to revise or amend floodplain mapping, which is codified in either letter of map provisions or letter of map amendment processes. Um, this process is a requirement to maintain flood insurance capacity. The last time we did this was two thousand and seven, so, uh, we're just simply updating the regulations. Um, the maps were also previously reviewed, city coordinated through the city engineer Cedar Corporation to revise the preliminary maps in the last couple of years, specifically with regard to Fisherman's Point. Those changes were made to the map, uh, to our satisfaction. Plan Commission, I, as mentioned, recommended moving forward with public hearing, um, and staff recommends adoption of ordinance number six forty nine.
Just gotta pull up the resolution here. We had the whole, uh, ordinance in here.
From the, uh, discussion at the Plan Commission meeting, now am I under the understanding that if we do not adopt this, people would have trouble getting flood insurance? Was that part of the conversation?
Yeah, it's, this is part of the requirement for being able to get flood, flood hazard insurance through FEMA um, or subsidized by FEMA. Otherwise, you can't get flood insurance and then you're subject to whatever happens to you. Uh, this is sort of the process or the thing that happens. Um, as I mentioned, most of the regulations in here haven't changed at all.
Yeah. Is there any further questions or discussion regarding ordinance number six, four, nine, dash, twenty twenty four? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance number six, forty nine, dash, twenty twenty four. Is there a second?
No, second.
Give it to Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Eight B, request, uh, for modification of headstone standards to permit a statue to be incorporated into the headstone. Deborah Atkinson, request order.
Keith, uh, there's a brief follow up to this item from the last meeting. Staff discussed the matter with the city attorney. The issue at hand is, one, what are the regulations concerning the Riverview Cemetery? Two, it constitutes a monument for a headstone. Municipal code has no regulations governing the cemetery, no definitions, no restrictions or anything similar. The regulatory force is governed by the pamphlet, which lists things like headstone monuments and markers generically without any definition. City attorney consulted common definitions of monument in a cemetery context as a clearly the statue wouldn't be a headstone or a marker and B, if this ever became a legal situation, the court would rely on a common definition. Search indicated that the term monument can be defined in multiple ways, including as a grave marker that includes a statue, though most examples incorporate the statue along with a more traditional headstone or marker. The city attorney provided two examples and they're listed in the report. One is from, uh, memorials dot com, which is a memorial statue or monument is a sculpture or figure of a person that is drafted by sculptors using long lasting materials that allow you to treasure or remember your loved one with respect and pride. The other one from cemetery dot com, which is a headstone, footstone or grave marker placed over or in the vicinity of a grave in memory of the decedent. While not exactly the same, both the city attorney is, uh, both are, uh, so excited by the city attorney is out of the opinion that an argument is at least possible to indicate a monument could include a statue. Given that the cemetery book lists an approval as, as shown on the documentation provided, even if it isn't specific, it does reference that the quester is the person before council now. The evidence is circumstantial, but in the opinion of the city attorney, the city would be hard pressed to deny the use of a statue as a monument in the cemetery. Further support of this conclusion is the presence of other statues in the older part of the cemetery and the lack of ordinances or regulations governing what is allowed in the newer part of the cemetery. Now, uh, from staff's point of view, council can choose to authorize displacement in lieu of a formal headstone. The base is intended to not exceed what is normally located in the Riverview Cemetery, and the older part of the cemetery is all sorts of monuments that are beyond the standard design of a headstone. What council likes to permit is what Mr. Weiss will implement. Um, I have attached the prior discussion for reference. Um, staff does recommend approval of the statue as best as provided by Ms. Atkinson.
You don't have any question? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to authorize the use of the statue as part of the headstone for Ms. Deborah Atkinson.
Oh, well, a second.
What's the first? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item eight, nine A, new business. Twenty twenty three financial audits presentation by Baker Tilly, consideration and approval.
Uh, yes, this is where Justin gets to step up and hopefully Joanne can find the presentation in the file.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as he said, I'm, I'm Justin Hoagland. I'm a principal at Baker Tilly, uh, one of your external auditors. But each of us honors again.
They would deserve it.
Okay. Uh, so we did issue your twenty twenty three financial reports, uh, back on May twenty third. Um, and so then after we do that, I would like to come to give a free presentation to the council, kind of go over uh, a couple of the reports that we issued, as well as, um, um, you know, financial highlights of, of the year, and then see if you have any, you know, questions for me. Um, so the, the first report I wanted to go over, it looks like this, this is a reporting and insights from twenty twenty three audit. It was happening in front of you. Um, I just kind of want to go over some, some pages in detail here. Um, because this does contain a lot of different information in it. Um, it's kind of flipping through, so, you know, page three kind of plays out what our responsibilities are as your auditor. Um, page six is where we list any internal control deficiencies that we found as part of the audit. Uh, page six and seven, number seven has more of the, kind of the bullet point, um, items that were, um, found, you know, a lot of these were same as last year. Um, and so looking on page seven, um, you know, a lot of these do relate to segregation of duties, you're given the size of your municipality. A lot of places don't want to hire an additional person and pay salary and benefits just to, you know, knock out some of these points and have a little bit better control. So again, these, a lot of these points are common to your size, uh, but they do pose risks with them. Um, you know, some of these are not lightest segregation of duties. Um, you know, I know Joanne and I had talked before about trying, you know, we did clear some um, from prior years, um, and there are other, are other ones on here that can be cleared. Um, so we're, we're more than happy to work with the city to kind of set up various processes and controls to help, help clear some of these. Um, but again, some of them will be very challenging to ever clear, given, um, the current number of personnel and everything. So on page eight, you know, one thing on this page I did want to point out is, is we have a paragraph related to water loss. Um, so every year, you know, we're required to calculate what the water loss percentage is. And so essentially if that's, you know, we're pumping this amount of water, here's what's actually getting billed to the customer. Um, and so that loss that didn't, never got filled for is twenty five percent of that water that's getting pumped, because the part that we get billed. Um, and so over the past, you know, seven or eight years, it's been as high as forty five percent here. Um, so again, it's, it's, it is much lower than kind of that high point. Um, I would say the industry average is closer to five to fifteen percent of water loss. You know, you're going to have some leaks and stuff like that. Um, there's also some non build kind of water loss such, such as, you know, flushing of fire hydrants, right? You're going to have some fire department training that's going to use water that doesn't automatically, you know, automatically get filled. Um, but again, twenty five percent is well above kind of what the industry average is. Um, I do know, you know, Tony and Nathan are always looking for leaks. Um, it's, it's, it is hard when a lot of these leaks can only be found when, you know, they're underground. Yeah, sometimes you only find them when you're replacing, um, a certain part of the system, which I look at.
But you know, a water main break, obviously, you're, you're guessing what loss was on a water main break by the time you find it. When Nathan, like when we flush hydrants and the fire department does exercises, is any of that metered or at least guesstimated?
Um, well, we do like an estimated, so like when they're doing, um, post casting, et cetera, Tony usually results one of the members of the fire department.
It's tracked?
Yes, maybe, I like to use, uh, flushing hydrants, you know, you know, the relative flow of the hydrant, so Tony will do a calculation of how long he was there until you get, if you're gets the completed flushing done, write down what he estimates he used.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tony does do a great job of tracking kind of those types of charges because they are, they do need to go on your P S D reporting each year for, for, for water, so, um, those types of things are tracked. So, and, and, uh, uh, page nine, uh, you know, at the top here, we just have a, a point about budgeting. Um, so Wisconsin State statutes require that you do adopt a budget for every fund. Um, there are a handful of funds for twenty twenty three where a budget was, was not adopted. Um, and I know in twenty twenty four, there was some delay in, in adopting a couple, a couple of budgets. Um, so we do recommend, you know, that budgets do get adopted on a timely basis. Normally that's in the November, December timeframe. Uh, you can always amend a budget, right? So if, if you get it adopted, you can always say, hey, some new stuff has come to light later on now in March, April, we want to adopt it. But that's, or amend it for that change, you can always amend it. That's, that's very common, um, in municipalities. I just wanted to point out that, um, you know, it's going to help your budget to actual reports that you get monthly. If you have a budget, at least you're comparing it to, to something. Um, even if it's just very similar to last year, at least you have something kind of as a placeholder. Um, next, I'm just going to go to passport, page twenty two. Yeah.
Okay, in sewer, um, the income they have at, as five thousand, five hundred and forty one compared to a hundred and forty four thousand. Was that due to repairs or it's on page eight?
Right, I've got page eight or?
Yeah. That sewer has such a drop in income.
Yeah, um, I will talk about sewer more later. Um, I know the operating, you know, revenues went down a little bit and the expenses went up. Um, I don't know if Nathan or anyone has a reason for why the expenses went up. You know, there could be one time charges that happened during twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty three, what, what was the question again? I'm sorry.
You, you bought, they bought a truck, I think.
The net, the net income was sort of like went down, I guess, amount from twenty two.
Um, well, we, we did the two lift station repairs, um, ball rail by later. Part of that's instead of mischarging more than sewer days, not that dumb play that the backdrop of dispersion in twenty twenty four, so that shouldn't have affected it, but a lot of it would have been part of the unit issue right there, though the higher, higher dollar mark, we did, um, some C I P, so I mean, the expenses were getting utilized and improved, what we have.
Yeah, so usually when you have a drive like that, it's usually a one time credit capital. For, for these types of funds, that's a, that's a great question. On page twenty two, that's my contact information, and I, you know, free to reach out to me or, or Amanda at any point during the year, like, by email or phone. Um, then page twenty six. Um, so we're required to give those charged with governance that the city council, um, to list of any material entries that we make, so that's what this page is, kind of listing out the material audit entries. Um, you know, we do provide a substantial amount of bookkeeping to the city to get your, um, statements to be materially accurate. Um, and that's has historically been the case. We, we, we historically always have provided up a lot of bookkeeping assistance. Um, you know, and Joanne is trying to take on a couple, a couple of things, and again, we're more than happy to help with the city to kind of provide training to to do some of these. You know, some of these are just one time things that just happened this year that we made entry for, but some of them are ones that we've just done historically every year. A lot of them are accrual based entries, meaning it's like right at year end, you know, booking taxes or accounts payable or accounts receivable. Um, so that's what a lot of these, especially these consist of. Uh, but obviously in that point, you know, I talked about budget actuals for, you know, having a budget. The less entries we do, the more accurate those budget to actual reports are that you're getting. Um, you know, you're probably using those to make informed decisions, so the less entries we have, the more relevant those, those budget, um, taxion reports are. So again, more than happy to talk with the city about kind of, kind of cut down on some of the entries. Um, that's all I wanted to go over from that. Record. Um, you know, the next report, the financial statements themselves, um, you know, the one thing I want to highlight on there is our opinion, it's on Roman numerals one through three. Um, and so we do give what's called a qualified opinion on a portion, um, of the city's financials. And this has been there for like the last, you know, five years or so, when I knew Gatsby came out, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, um, was essentially the standards that we need to follow as auditors. Um, and so one came out related to O P E V S or other close employment benefits, you know, well, five years ago. Um, and essentially since retirees are allowed to stay on the city's insurance, there's that kind of implicit rate subsidy that potentially been placed, so you're paying more of your insurance because you're allowing retirees to stay on it. Uh, and so when Gatsby seventy five came out, there's a specific point about implicit rate subsidies. And so essentially the city would have been needed an actuarial study done at that time to determine what is that liability that we're passing on it because we're allowing retirees to stay on. Um, for the city elected at that time not to have that study done, and so we can't, we don't know what the liability truly is. I'm assuming it's immaterial. But since the city didn't have a study done, we can't give an opinion on, on it. That's why it's a qualified opinion. You know, the city could have a study done whenever it wants now and, and, and get rid of it. Um, if they so choose.
Who does that study? Do you do that?
No, no, there would be an actual, actuarial firm. Um, so there's a handful, actuarial firm that would do it, Gillman, among, among others. Um, you know, given your size, there's simplified studies that can be done versus having a full blown actuarial study. Um, when a lot of our clients had this happen and did this, I think they arranged from like two to four thousand dollars to have them done. Inflation, there might be more now. I, I, we haven't had, had our clients redo them since then, so. Um, just something to consider. Um, the rest of your statements, we do give what's called a, a clean or unmodified opinion. Um, so that, that's all good and, and what the same opinion that we've given, um, to the city in the past. Um, so kind of last thing I wanted to go over the financial highlights, it's this document. Um, charts and graphs in it. Just kind of go over the numbers for twenty twenty three. Um, so looking at page one. Yeah, I have a copy of this. He's also got one on the screen. Yeah, so it's a page one here, you can see the chart, um, on the screen here. You know, a good kind of start when you're assessing the financial health of municipality is to look at the general fund. Um, this is the main operating fund of the city where a lot of the day to day transactions run through. And specifically, we like to look at the fund balance or, um, as most people know it as, the equity is kind of built up over the years. Um, so you can see we have the twenty twenty two numbers as well as the twenty twenty three numbers here. Uh, twenty twenty three is that, that blue color. Um, and so your fund balance is, is broken down essentially into three different types or buckets. Um, at the bottom here, you'll see there's the non spendable fund now, it's about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, it's considered non spendable because it's not in spendable form. And so page thirty eight of your financials breaks down in detail what's in these different buckets. But a hundred thousand dollars, a big, big chunk of it is the general fund has advanced money to tip three, right? It's a newer tip, needs money to kind of get it off the ground. But the tip is not expected to repay that money within the next year. So it's considered non spendable. Um, you know, another part of that, I think the other half about is, um, related to prepaid's. Um, I believe there was like a few, part of a prepaid ambulance in there, um, for twenty twenty three. So again, you've kind of spent that money already in twenty twenty three. It doesn't show up as an expense though, because you haven't actually received the ambulance yet. Um, so again, it's kind of in a non spendable form. Um, next up there, you have the assigned fund balance at sixty three thousand. Um, so the city council kind of sign and unassigned funds for, for various things. A lot of places do it for capital projects that they know are coming. Um, I think a good chunk of that sixty three thousand relates to police money that's been assigned, some to, you know, K nine and, and other items. Um, and so then kind of what's left over is this unassigned fund balance is four hundred and one thousand. Again, it has no restrictions on it and used or not used, um, at the city's discretion. You'll see that it did go up a considerable, considerable amount, about eighty thousand dollars, um, in twenty twenty three, so that's, that's good to see. Um, and kind of, you know, if it went down a little bit on this page, um, there's a summarized income statement. Um, so this is a very high level budget to actual for your general fund in twenty twenty three. Um, you'll see as far as the budget, you essentially budgeted to use up about twenty six thousand dollars of your fund balance in twenty twenty three. Um, the actual amount is you had a net income of about seventy thousand. So you actually did better than budget by about ninety six thousand. Um, again, great to see, um, you know, really over the last five, six or even seven years, the general fund has had a net income each of those years. It, it was in a little bit of a hole at one point and it's has slowly climbed out of that hole every year over the last, again, six, seven years. Um, so again, great to see that. You know, you'll see that a big chunk of that's because revenues were more than budgeted. Um, I think there were some grants that you received that were unbudgeted. There was an E M, EMS grant for like seventy five, seventy six thousand. Didn't have a budget for it that you received as well as, I think there's like a twenty five thousand dollar, um, urban forestry grant or something like that. So that's, that's part of um, again, why you're better than budget. Um, so going on to the next page. So one ratio that we'd like to calculate is we take that unrestricted fund balance that we just talked about on the last page. We divide it by your expenditures in the general fund. Essentially, this is calculating, you know, how long can we keep the lights on, keep paying the bills, just using that unassigned fund balance? Um, if we didn't take in any more revenues. And so the red is what the city's, um, ratio calculates out to, the blue dots are other municipalities for size in Wisconsin, what their averages are. Um, so essentially that thirteen point seven percent for twenty twenty three calculates out to about one point six months again of, um, unassigned funds that you have on hand. Um, like I talked about on the last slide, you can see it's slowly going up the last five years that we're showing there. Great to see you are still um, a little bit under kind of what the average is for, for other municipalities, but again, moving definitely in the right direction. Um, so moving on to the next page. So this one is all about debt. Uh, again, looking at debt is another key area when assessing the financial health of a municipality. Um, this line chart that you see on the screen, um, the black is your statutory debt limit. Um, this line chart that you see on the screen, um, the black is your statutory debt limit. So you can take out up to five percent of the city's equalized value in general obligation debt, so that black line is calculating what that five percent is. The red is how much actual general obligation debt the city has outstanding, um, so at the end of twenty twenty-three, the city's essentially used up. Thirty-seven percent of your debt. Cap- capacity, which I would say is pretty average for other, uh, municipalities your size, you know, once you start getting to sixty, seventy percent. Of it being used up is kind of when I start to get a, a little nervous, so you're, you're well under that. Um, and you just certainly have, you know, capacity, if you need to borrow for something, you, you, you still have that capacity out there. Um, moving on to the next page. This is another kind of chart around debt service and debt. The non-ratio we like to calculate is, you know, what percent of your normal routine expenses do you have to devote to debt service payments? Obviously, if you have to go and pay debt off, you can't use it on a new truck or whatever. So in twenty twenty-three, you can see the ratio there is that you paid eleven point four percent of your expenses or debt service related, so principal and interest payments on your debt. So the cities in red, which are slightly below, um, the black dots are other municipalities your size, so again, that's, that's a good spot to the end. Uh, I will know, I will kind of point out that spike there that you see, where it's thirty-seven percent in twenty twenty-one, that's because there was debt that was refunded during that year, so from an accounting standard. When a debt gets refunded, so you're doing one debt or another debt for better interest rates, um. We have to show it as an expense and revenue coming in, so that's why that spike was there, it's kind of like an artificial spike. It's just because of the refunding, so there's nothing concerning that. Couple other things I want to point out, the city side. Before kind of jumping to the utilities, um, so there, the city does still have ARPA funds remaining, at least as of twelve thirty-one, twenty-three. Um, there's about two hundred and twenty-five thousand of American Rescue Plan Act funds that were remaining. Those need to be spent or obligated by the end of twenty twenty-four. Um, so really, six and a half months or so here. Obligated means you actually have, have to have a signed contract in place, you can't just budget it, budget is not strong enough. So it has to either be used or obligated, meaning like a signed contract, so if you're going to use it on a road project, you'd have to have the signed contract with the, with the contractor for that. Luckily, you know, you can use this, these funds on almost anything. You can't use it to pay off debt service, that's one of the only things you can't use it on, you can use it on salaries, roads, equipment, I mean, it's almost anything else. Um, so just make sure it gets used, you don't want to have to get it plodged back somehow by the US Treasury. But I just wanted to point that out, so it does get spent by the end of this year. So that should certainly help, um, you know, the general fund or whatever fund kind of uses those, those monies and. The other one I just wanted to talk about was the Marina Fund, um, so at the end of the year, the Marina Fund had about a seventy-five thousand dollars of fund balance left. For twenty twenty-two, it had a net loss of about a hundred fifteen thousand. For twenty twenty-three, it had a net loss of about ninety-six thousand, so if that continues course, that, that fund's going to be out of money and out of fund balance in, in twenty twenty-four. You know, obviously there are some issues with COVID, the flooding and everything that happened that, that I'm sure attributed to some of that. But the city's going to have to decide if that continues, how to at least subsidize the Marina Fund. Um, you know, a couple of options are transfer money in every year from the general fund to the Marina Fund to cover the cost, that is, they're kind of overrun. You could have a portion of levy go straight to the Marina also. But somehow that's fund's going to need to be baited all if it does start to go in, into negative.
That one is already. You know, those funds have already been transferred into the twenty twenty-four budget, so that.
Okay.
What's in there, if we stay on the present course, those funds will not be there.
As, as far as like.
The seventy-four thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars.
It's been used up already.
Well, we added it to the budget.
We added it to the Marina budget.
Okay, that's money can you transfer from the general fund in there that help subsidize it?
Well, not for the general fund, from the balance.
From the fund balance of Marina Fund.
They budgeted accounting for that fund balance as part of the budget for the year.
To help balance it.
They anticipate.
Oh, did it increase the fund out? Gotcha. So your budget ain't, uh, having that income in that fund essentially?
No.
No.
So because our revenues were short of what our expenses are, that fund, that seventy-five thousand of fund balance, we are, we accounted it as revenue in the budget to help balance it.
So you're saying you're going to use it all up, it's going to go to zero?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Something changes by the end of the year.
Okay. Yep, yeah, so then, you know, for twenty twenty-five, something will have to do.
And that's where, like, you're talking about using like, you know, levy or something, or.
Yeah.
General fund money.
Yeah. Yeah, which I mean, I, I would say not super uncommon for, you know, the, the Marina brings in a lot of business and whatnot, so just thinking of. The net income by it or loss by itself, there, there's other programs like that that municipalities have that they subsidize, right, because they want people to come here. To use it, so, but it is, you know, at least all the time that I've been here, I don't think the general funds had to subsidize. The, the Marina like this, like this previously, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Twenty years? Yeah, we built up the fund to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, I think. At one time.
Just something to think about, any other different ways to increase the revenues, I, you know. Increase in fuel sales, rental fees, what, whatever it is, um, this is kind of beyond me, but it's something to think about for the future here. So moving on to the next page, page five here. Um, just kind of talk about the utilities briefly, so the first one is a water utility. Um, you'll see we kind of have the operating results here at the top, operating revenues are red. Black are the operating expenses, obviously you always want to have some buffer between the red and the black, um, because there are non-operating. Expenses that are, don't get shown on, on this graphic here, um, so the water utility actually had a net loss in total of about eleven thousand during twenty twenty-three. Um, because these operating results don't factor in the interest that you're paying on your debt, it's considered non-operating revenue, um, so again. The utility funds should be built to be self-sufficient funds, meaning that you're taking in enough user charges. And everything to pay for all the expenses that happen in these funds and all the upkeeps. So whenever you're kind of having a net loss, especially if it's, you know, again, sometimes as we, as we talked about, you could have one-time charges that could give you a net loss during a year or two. But if you're having a consistent net loss, you should really be looking at your rates, you need to have a rate study done, or at least, uh, simplified rate. Um, increase, um, a lot of places do that every year, um, just as a standard, so, um, again, something to, to kind of consider going forward, because you can't just. Have loss after loss after loss, um, in these funds, so. Um, below the operating results kind of graph, we have this unrestricted reserves calculation. So again, similar to what I talked about before, we want to know how many kind of months of cash on hand you have, um. Based on your expenditures, and so for twenty twenty-three, you have about twelve months or about a year of cash on hand, um, so that's actually in a fairly strong, strong position. Under that, you have your debt coverage, so some of your water and sewer debt has a debt coverage requirement within your debt, um. Of it. So essentially that the required amount is one point two five, um, essentially it's trying to calculate to make sure you have one point two five. Times your next debt service payment, because these places want you to make sure you're going to pay your debt next year. Um, and so there's a calculation to kind of determine if you're, uh, in compliance with this debt coverage ratio. Uh, page thirty-six of the financials kind of showing detail how that's calculated, um. But you have, you didn't meet that ratio, uh, for twenty twenty-three, and, and you have for the last five years shown here. Um, so, so definitely no issues with that, um, the last thing on this page, this investment in capital. You know, these are very capital-intensive funds, right, you have all the meters, piping and everything. So we always like to see, you know, of that capital that you have, how much is still. That the payout is, that's connected to it, and how much is equity or it's paid off, um, and own. Um, and so actually ninety-eight percent of your capital assets are still. Attached to debt that's outstanding and needs to be paid off, that is a pretty high, um, amount. Usually we like to see it's closer to fifty fifty, but it all depends on the age of the system and everything, you know, if you just took out a bunch of debt to re. To redo a wastewater treatment plan or something, we would expect that to be really high. So again, it is, it is a pretty high figure, you do have some very, um, I would say, long. Maturity debt that's out twenty, thirty years, um, so kind of your, your asset or your plant's depreciating at kind of a similar amount to what you're paying off for debt, you know, if it's thirty years debt or whatever.
Is depreciation factored into that?
Yeah.
So that's probably the largest reason why we're where we're at.
Yeah, and I mean, if you had depreciation that was like kind of the exact same length as your debt, and, and you took out debt to do all of your capital. And you pay any of that cash upfront, then if you would almost be at a hundred percent the entire time, depending on interest rates and everything, but roughly. Roughly that, so. Essentially, you know, you have your capital, let's say a hundred thousand dollars of capital. And, um, it depreciates a hundred percent each year, now it's, next year it's only worth ninety thousand dollars on your books, because there's like ten thousand dollars of depreciation. Um, and you know, your debt might go down a little bit, but might go down ten percent as well each year, so again, that's why this, that figure might not change if, if you have very long outstanding debt. Um, so next is a sewer utility on the next page here. Again. The top kind of shows your operating results, red is your operating revenue, blacks operating expenses, as pointed out earlier, um. Those both got a lot closer, so your, your, um, operating. Kind of total operating loss or income went down a lot from, from last year, um. And when factored in the non-operating expenses again, like your interest on your debt that you had to pay. Um, there was a loss of about sixty-four thousand dollars in the sewer fund, so again, similar to, um, the water. You know, there can be those one-time expenses that you have that, that, you know, it sounds like with the. First wells and whatnot that increased that for one year, but again, if you're having multi-years that where this is happening, you're having a net loss, um, you really should evaluate. Rates and if a rate study, um, needs to be done. Um, again, we calculate your unrestricted reserves. At five point one nine months, uh, let's say that's pretty average, um, for other sewer utilities. Um, your debt coverage, again, just like your water debt, you have this debt coverage limit, it's one point one versus one point two five. But, um, you, the city's never had any issues meeting that, that kind of debt coverage requirement. And kind of like, again, what I said before, the investment in capital, this is much closer to fifty fifty equity and debt, um, that's kind of right where we want to, want to see it on average, so, um, no concerns there. That's really all I had on financial highlights and points, or any questions?
So, because usually I would call like a synopsis sheet, like at the end, some recommendations going forward. Well, I don't know, it seems like you finished off your briefing with something like, here are some things going forward, I think that you could work on. And, you know, it's oftentimes the same thing, um, having more oversight. More people looking at a particular thing and this and that, um, and then sometimes there's something different in a year.
Yeah, you know, I would say, I kind of feel like I can already went through some of the main things I would have brought up, the ARPA funding needing to be spent for Marina, needing to be addressed. If that continues, um.
If that's all inclusive, that's fine, I'm just putting it out there, so.
Yeah, no, nothing, nothing, that's, that's no crazy or anything like that.
So the overall feeling for the current financial situation, the city, it'd be considered what, in your opinion?
Uh, you know, looking at most of the ratios that we like to look at, you're either at or below, um. Where other municipalities are, um, again, the general fund's done really well over the last six or seven years, had a net income every year. So once you get in a hole, it's very hard to get out of, because you have very few revenue sources that a municipality can do, you have governmental revenue for grants and stuff, you have. So there's maybe one, so hard to get out of that hole, but the city has done a good job in budgeting and making sure you're slowly getting out of that, um, so just keep going that direction.
You know, you're looking at budget time and what, what are we going to be cutting? Because the revenue just isn't growing at the same rate that the expenses are, that's, that's the challenge that we continuously face.
Yeah, and again, you'll have that, a one-time Band-Aid with the ARPA funds being spent to twenty, twenty, I'm assuming that you're going to need it spent to twenty twenty-four or applied to something, you can always apply them back. To, you know, again, wages or something that have already happened, um, so you shouldn't have any issue spending, but that's going to be a really big one-time bump. Again, likely in the general fund, um. But after that, the general funds, you know, assume there's not some more ARPA money or, or, or COVID money like that. Hopefully not, we don't have, hopefully we don't have to go through that again, um, then. The general fund's really going to be more self-sufficient, it's not going to have this kind of money, and with the Marina. It, it's going to be a drain on, and taking a hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund each year that it previously didn't, didn't take. That's going to really be a drain on the general fund, and again, it didn't have to help support over the last. As far, again, as far as I've been here, I don't think it's ever had to support it like that, so.
So anyone have any questions? No questions, well, that was a pretty good briefing, then, everybody's answers are made.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
All right, so I would entertain a motion that we place the annual audit on file as submitted.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one comment.
You have a motion?
Do we have a second?
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I did, I, I just, you know, I got these Thursday night at the, uh, Public Works Committee meeting, and I did not really get a chance to read through. Any of them, the agenda was two hundred pages long. And besides these reports, and the agenda came out on Friday afternoon at twelve-thirty, we'll generally, we close. On Friday afternoon at noon, which means I would have to spend Saturday and Sunday looking through all this. And then I don't, didn't really have a real lot of time to ask any questions, you know, of the administrator or anything before the council meeting. I guess in the future, I was not aware that these reports were available until Thursday afternoon, I guess in the future, I would ask that these reports be given to us. A little bit sooner than a Thursday or a Friday before the council meeting. Would have a little bit more time to read through these, because I have not had time to read through, to be honest with you, I did not read through any of these reports. So five votes, yes, I'm basically voting on the synopsis that Baker till it escape. And I guess I'm not going to spend the weekend Saturdays and Sundays, uh, reading through a mountain of. Paper and documents. So in the future, I would just ask that these reports be given to us at least a week prior.
Is there any urgency that we would need to approve this today?
Reports are already submitted, so all you're doing is you're just putting them on file, there's, it's not a motion to approve or disapprove, they've already been.
Just a file and was the motion.
They're just submitting.
And you're, they're not really approving them because.
It, it's not. Is what the audit is.
The auditor does the audit and submits it, submits the results to the state.
Yeah, because I had to submit it to the state by May fifteenth, so, I mean, other than doing an amendment. But they would recommend the amendment.
So we're not really approving, so, I mean.
Hey, just putting them on file, you're just indicating you've received it.
Typically, if I'm not mistaken, the, the, the idea behind this is to be made aware of everything, get the explanation of the documents, you always have the documents each year going forward. And, you know, finance committee and staff can then look at taking these recommendations and implementing something different for the next year's budget, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
And I, you know, we don't get these, we, you know, we got them on last week, Monday. So, we don't, I mean, we're, we're at the mercy of when they send them to us, so.
Monday, you know, or Tuesday would have been better than Thursday night.
Well, true, I understand that, but I just want to let you know.
I mean, it's probably the finance committee too, could we, we had them on Tuesday.
Because I put them out.
Yeah.
Monday afternoon or Tuesday morning, whenever I got, you know, we got the delivery, so. Because I put them out Monday afternoon or Tuesday morning, whenever I got, you know, we got the delivery, so.
Yeah, I, I saw a couple of recommendations, and it seems like the finance committee should be. Going through some of the recommendations and putting together some sort of plan. To address some of the items. Definitely. I assume, I don't know if you reviewed those in the finance committee and.
They said, oh, you should look at doing this, look at doing that, it seems to me that the finance, they should read through this, come up with a plan to address those items. And maybe the plan is to do nothing because, you know, we can't hire another person.
Yeah, but it's, it's just the beginning. Don't work on it moving forward, so. So any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Both, motion carried. Nine B prioritization presentation for Marsh Walk Campground Harbor Area Grants. Pursuit with Lake Shore Natural Resource Partnership, American Rivers, Water Now Alliance, One Water Econ. That's a long handle.
Has a lot of people involved.
Well, well, we'll be glad to hear from you.
Want me to start, okay. Alright, uh what you see on the screen, I gave a copy of this presentation to everybody, so you have it in front of you, so you can put it along. What we're doing here is we're discussing uh implementation of some of the projects in the Harbor Master Plan as amended. These are about trying to work on a prod, on a program to. Improve resiliency of some of these features in a way that's easiest. Some of the relatively lower cost projects that can be done relatively quickly. The uh agenda for this discussion, if you want. The uh agenda for this presentation is to explore the overall implementation of the Harbor Master Plan. Priority prioritization, uh the multiple benefits of the two projects that we've actually included here and then. Priority grant options and the ones that are available and next steps, and then to go over any questions, okay, next. The listing of priorities on the left is. Ideas that have been listed in plan documents and. Policies of the city uh included in uh things like the waterfront plan. The integrated plan, which is the combination of the outdoor recreation plan, the waterfront, and for conference crimes, well of our. Capital improvements Plan as well as the Harbor Master Plan. Uh these are all things that are, are tied or affiliated with these types of projects, uh next slide. For this project, uh working with uh. Consultants and working with Cedar Corp, we felt like these two projects would be, as I say. The easiest to do, just because they're, they've got a most direct benefit and it's quickest to get there. These are projects that, these are areas that we already have something on the ground. That could easily be revitalized and expanded and coordinated with other facilities in the area. Um so we're gonna move on with these two, these are all part of the Harbor Master Plan, next slide. Uh the first one is the city campground, the image on the left you can see is from uh point of view of the boat launch area. After a substantial rainfall, um. The right is the uh area shown from the Harbor Master Plan. Uh you got the existing campground and the objective would be to expand the campground into the area above to the north of it. As shown in the Carper Master Plan, next slide shows that area schematically as provided in the master plan. Uh to include tent sites uh to the north as well as connection to the. Marsh Walk uh from, from both the boat launches as well as from the uh campground area itself. Uh also provides for natural landscaping and then obviously a campground expansion, because not everybody necessarily will want to go to a campground. Going a trailer behind them. Uh this provides for additional flexibility for people that just want to come in and pitch a tent, just hang out there. So that's what we aim for with this particular project. The other one, next slide. Is largely in the walk, you can see the image from uh the walk itself. Uh the walk is damaged, and so we don't really want people out there doing a whole lot, you can see it on the little image lower right, that some parts of it are. Missing or broken, um this project would involve, uh next slide would involve the. Integration or the upgrading of the board block, which is, the existing is approximately a quarter mile. And then the expansion of another fifteen hundred feet. The expansion of the marsh, of the walk to the north up to and linking to the Anapie State Trail. Would provide for increased uh green spaces, community green space expansion into the area as well as. Um a connection between now the Anapie State Trail down to the, down to the Marsh Walk and then down into the campground. So it would provide a linked pathway system.
We're seeing any issues, book and permits for them?
Um I'll let. Them talk about it, um as well as for uh Brandon, if he wants to weigh in on that part of it, since he was part of the Harbor Master Plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Shannon Vires of American Rivers and Amy Lentz of the Lake Shore Natural Resource Partnership.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members, thank you all for letting us come and talk to you today, we've been working with. Municipal leaders in your city for the last couple of years, we're excited to be able to. Talk to you about these projects and things we've been working on behind the scenes. Um I'm based in Grand Rapids, I'm an economist with American Rivers, we're a national nonprofit. And I work closely with communities and community partners on um adopting solutions and accessing funding. To help protect and restore our freshwater resources, and you is one of our partners right here in your backyard that you work with.
Yeah, I can. Yeah, so I mainly learn some with Lake Shore Natural Resource Partnership, so we work with uh from Ozaki County up through Door um to Westlake, Winnebago. Um on stuff like this, direct municipal engagement, but um our focus is, is clean water and uh. We try to kind of like chance some help with funding, you know, a lot of grant opportunities, things like that, so. Yeah, so this is our, our program, um we have a program called the Coastal Resilience Community Impact Project. And so ultimately, that's working with Port Washington, Sheboygan, Manitowoc, you guys, Kauani and Algoa. Um on kind of what they want to do, these communities want to do as far as implementing. Um you know, things that would protect infrastructure from um weathering and damage, so. For example, in Port Washington, we're working on, there's a four mile or two mile city-owned corridor that we're working on doing kind of a. River revitalization on, um in Algoa, we're working a lot on stormwater. Uh we're actually working a little bit on stormwater here as well, uh with the Funville Lake Michigan, so. Just kind of a general idea, like this is part of a, a broader program that we, we offer the support to municipalities. Oh yeah, 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 great, we're funded by the Funville Lake Michigan in order to do this work. So next slide, sorry, I could have, yeah.
Next slide is, we don't work alone, we've got a team of experts um that weren't able to join us today, they're across the country. But One Water Econ, they do economic and um strategic planning for communities on water resource management. And Water Now Alliance, they have a national network of local water leaders, help empower them. To learn about how to implement these innovative uh solutions for water management. So they're listening to us, they joined your YouTube for today, it's just a.
I don't see anything neat about them.
And next slide, um so I'm gonna go over some costs and benefits that we did in these projects, because yes, we'll get to the money and how to fund them. But we do know that in demonstrating the value of these projects. Um can help you in planning and prioritizing what the needs are in your communities, um. You can go ahead. So you mentioned, you know, she's mentioned resilience, and resilience just means the adapt to, or the ability to adapt um. And withstand and be flexible on changing conditions, and that can mean different things to different communities and look different ways. So we surveyed municipal leaders across, all along Lake Michigan on what they meant. Um what resiliency, I'm sorry, meant to them, so reducing flood risk, uh. Reducing the amount of beach closures in their communities, because they know that has an impact to residents and their economies. Um stimulating those economies with tourism and amenities, improving water quality and protecting natural resources. Were some of the things that came up time and time again, so we're like, well, we have a couple of tools that would help address all these things in common. And that we call, you can, sorry, is natural resilience. And it goes by a lot of different names and terms that we throw around, but it's just native plants and trees and vegetations. Kind of soften up your shorelines, um they help reduce the pollutants from water, so it'll improve the water quality in your freshwater resources. They also. Also will help um provide all those natural amenities that maybe people are looking for, like outdoor community spaces. To relax, reduce your soil erosion and reduce flooding in communities, because they soak up water, they kind of. Act um as sponges for cities and urbanized areas, to help them treat them more naturally and keep the pollutants out of our water.
Well, effective is that? And keeping invasives, oh.
That's very well, it depends, once you get good plant growth. Um and it takes a couple of years for those roots to really get established and grow, a lot of times they will overgrow invasive plant species. As far as invasive fish habitats, we do know that by planting um native. Plants near waterways help filters out those pollutions that makes your native habitat, fish habitats a lot stronger and more resilient. Doesn't mean they keep out the invasives, but they help the native fish be more stronger to, you know, ward off themselves. And I'm not the fish expert, so.
So shoreline's also reduced the velocity of the water.
Yeah, so I'm like flowing off the shore and you'll see, you've seen a lot of erosion, I've seen up and down the coast, the Michigan side as well. We've got houses falling in the water over there, so these will help firm up and help slow the speed of that water off the shoreline, which helps the whole shoreline from shifting and blowing. So you probably, there's a lot of benefits associated with these natural infrastructure projects. That's our water quality, but they add these recreational amenities, so if we include them. Into places like the campground, that's already a priority in your community, um we've crunched some numbers and found out that the value. Of this project could be over six million dollars over thirty years. And this doesn't count the revenue that we expect would increase. From the increase in attraction and tourism of the campground, right, once it's prettier and it has all these amenities. There's more people want to go there, you can charge higher rates, so this doesn't include the revenue that the campground will receive, just the actual benefits from the, improving the um. Habitats and from um the recreational use of folks visiting the area. Plus you get all those extra benefits, like carbon sequestration, improving air quality.
Connecting the Anapie Trail, I think would just, that's, that would be great.
You get all, you could get tourism, you can see little pop-up shops, little entrepreneur businesses, maybe help supporting these recreation activities. Along the corridor, sure. So this was on the campground, um and investment in this project was. Four point six two million, that's over the thirty years, the initial cost was two point six million. Um so your ROI, you're looking at, you know, a lot of more profit off the cost of this, a dollar thirty. Um and ROI over the thirty years, and you can. Keep going, we've got the marshland, we did the same thing with the marshland. Because we're not actually putting any infrastructure, like we're not uh putting in the campground, the tents, uh the bathrooms. We're just looking at the habitat and like kind of water quality improvements from that project, keeping nature as it's intended, you know, to be. And all the recreation that would come to that, and you, you see just the recreation alone is over six million dollars over that uh thirty years.
Excuse me, how much of the marshland and walk is still usable? Is any of it usable?
Arguably none, but. Yeah, I've been out there a couple of times.
Because I know in two thousand seven, Charlie Peterson and I went out there and with the city crew. And we did a bunch of work out there.
We put on the original one.
Oh, that was put in by, we got a grant for that, that was put in by. It wasn't the Clean Water Fund, it was.
It had have been thirty years ago at least.
Yeah, the signs out there, um that said who funded that, but I don't remember, it was the uh. I don't remember.
I think Nate says he thinks it was Wisconsin Coastal Management who put it in originally.
I don't, I know the signs out there. Yeah, I don't remember the signs out there though, but I don't remember. Uh who funded that.
I'd be curious about what the design would look like. So could withstand the water fluctuations.
Yeah, that's where we put a lot of the rain gardens, I'll capture the waters, it's coming down off that slope. And that will help reduce some of the flooding, um there is a more detailed, a little more detailed design drawings in the Harbor Master Plan. Which is where we pulled these from, um but they haven't actually done the engineering drawings. Yeah, that's what we, we need some money, we're gonna help you get there. Um another benefit before we move on, we talked about like tourism and. The recreation, but there's also benefits just in your local residents using that as volunteers. Like you said, a couple of folks went out there to do the bar walk, so getting volunteers out there and engaged and keeping it nice and clean. Um but also with schools, this could be place-based learning and education for schools to learn into, and that actually has an economic value in of itself. But then we're turning it on to you, and about how do we get these funded?
So yeah, so um like Shannon mentioned, you know, there's a lot of economic benefits, but in order to get there, you have to put the money in upfront, right? So the goal of what L N R P is trying to do with the Coastal Resilience Community Impact Project and what we've done in other municipalities is look for, not, not necessarily for. For loans or for city-fronted investment, but instead for grants um that will pay for this, and, and as Heath mentioned earlier. Uh the reason that we started, I mean, there's eighteen projects or whatever in the Harbor Master Plan, I think eleven are city-owned or something like that. The reason that we started with these two is because they're, they are really fundable, um people love a freshwater wetland marsh. Uh and by people, I mean government agencies who want to give us money. So ultimately, looking at the habitat benefits and really focusing on those in addition to the recreation is, is why we pick these. Um so Carolyn and Hillary at um. At their organization, they put together uh kind of three grants, which you can see uh you guys have in front of you, I have it in front of me. Um the first one is the Land and Water Conservation uh Fund, and that, all three of these are through the D N R. Um Land and Water Conservation Fund uh wants to focus on, you know, improved water quality. Shoreline resilience, improved connectivity, improved recreation and flood mitigation, all of which, you can see that up there, all of which are. You know, direct benefits, especially to the Marshall walk, but to the campground as well. Um and so the deadline for that would be May first, the thing is, we don't necessarily know how many funds will be available and what our cap uh and our budget ask will be, because. It, it just depends on what the federal allotment is, so the federal gives it to the state and it filters through that way. Um the second grant is the sewer overflow stormwater reuse municipal grant program, um. And that is kind of a combo with the urban non-point stormwater management grants, those, they have uh the same application. And they're due at the same time, um so you can put them at the same time, and uh the big, the big thing that like our team has kind of been looking at. Is. Kauani's in a really interesting position, because you guys are urban technically, but it's also pretty rural here. And um the median income is kind of teetering on the edge of what would or wouldn't be, you know, like considered. Stress, so depending on how we kind of frame the spaces to these granting agencies, it opens up. A lot of uh different avenues for funding, which is, which is good, um. So ultimately, those are both due April fifteenth, um and then. We would apply for them at the same time, so. Um one consideration is that there likely be match requirements for these, but the way that um it was set up is so that they can serve to match each other. So we, and if you go to the next slide, I think we have the timeline, oh, that, those are the goals. Um well, we can go over the goals now, or like the next steps, so in order to apply for these at all. Um the first thing that would need to happen is reach out to the contacts for each grant. Uh see, you can just go up to the. You can go up to the one before, we can talk through that first.
Okay.
It's, you know, six one half thousand the other, so reaching out to the D N R contacts for each grant, and L N R P's worked. With the D N R and all these folks before, so that's something that I would be able to do, working with Heath, is kind of just like, we could reach out. Um and say, hey, we're interested in pursuing this and kind of see what, what, where the city's positioned to receive this funding, what we need to provide to them. Uh before we do all the work of putting in the grant application. The big, the big thing number two, um especially for the Land and Water Conservation Grant, is that the city needs to renew its uh recreation plan, so I think that expired in. April, and so once that's renewed and that these things are kind of prioritized in it. That'll, uh that's essential for some of these funding in order for us to qualify. But it is, um it is also, you know, encouraged just as a demonstration for additional funding um as well. The third thing is if the council would adopt, potentially adopt a, a resolution. Just, you know, approving that, that these projects getting done is, is a priority and that. Uh that would give us a little bit of, of security, knowing that these are city priorities and that. We have that backing from you guys to kind of go forward and take these next, next steps and, and apply for these grants. Um and last but not least is making. Um, and last but not least, is making sure that the campground and Marshall Walk projects are included in the capital budget. Cause that's another thing that a lot of these grants require, so that was a lot of, do you guys have any questions on the, these four things before we kind of jump to timeline?
No.
So the timeline, um and this is a, this is a rough timeline, assuming the, we're only putting in applications for. These three um grants, so we would look to kind of start contacting next month. And then, you know, moving forward with funding applications. And uh getting, I think it's, it's twenty, twenty thirty-one is when, you know, with this money. The projects would be complete with fully grant, fully grant-funded um dollars. There are other options that we could talk about, uh, there's additional grants, so like, like I mentioned, um, the. Wisconsin Coastal Management probably put in the first Marshland Walk uh that Boardwalk. And so, you know, getting Todd Bribie out to the site and saying, hey, Todd, you know, you guys invested in this before, what do you think? Looking at potentially coastal management funding, uh L N R P's worked a lot with coastal management before. Um, and then, you know, there's NIFWIF or certain other like federal funding that prioritizes habitat that we could also use in addition to these three. Um, these three are just, we thought that these three were the best fit specifically for what the goals of. The project would be, but that doesn't mean they're the only fit, so that, this is, this timeline's kind of based on that, but it could be. Accelerated depending on how successful the grant applications are, and uh Shannon and I are working with, with Brandon and Cedar for on that. Um, to make sure that we're getting their plans and and their conceptual designs and their budgets incorporated into these funding opportunities.
I think that's it, I'm with Brandon, do you have anything you wanna add?
Are we to permit for something like this, you know, how we start designing and looking into things, we don't know what permits we require, but just looking at like. Um, Heckrod in Minasha, they have kind of a boardwalk that has miles of trails through marsh wetland area and stuff like that, or like the Horacon Marsh itself has. Miles of boardwalk trails and things like that, so I think there's other projects that, you know, are there existing that are on for a long time that have been. Per permitted at one point to move. And so, um, it it may be a challenge, but I wouldn't say it's anything.
Oh, I, I, I know they're there and I've seen them, it's just. Yeah. What you plan in terms of permit?
Yeah, oh absolutely, and and again, you know, this was all based off concept, you know, design from the Harbor Master Plan Amendment. So, you know, the design hasn't been started at all, you know, how this is gonna be built, everything, you know, that sort of stuff, so everything. Public input sessions and surveys and stuff with the communities, council members that were here, stakeholders and things like that, but. Wanted to be putting together the whole, the whole Harbor Master Plan.
So there's two initial things that I'm hearing then right now, we're looking at, we know regardless, we had to update our Harbor Master Plan. So in regards to looking at this uh. Boardwalk, et cetera. We don't know anything about the dollar amount or anything.
We do.
We do.
Um, yeah, he, uh, Cedar, he, right here, um, yeah, no.
So we had updated the estimates from the Harbor Master Plan Amendment that um they used to submit for a grant previously for designing. Um, the, the Marshland Walk, um, which is on a recently unsuccessful at that point, um.
As it was though, right, not this new idea of connecting it to the Annapia, did it have to?
That, the idea of connecting to the Annapia was already in the conceptual plan, so. Not necessarily as it was, but as it was in the, in the concept drawing.
Correct, so and and then, yeah, we provided updated estimates and since we're going for grant money, um with the. Uh, the city campground debt is updated to about two point six million, and these are really conservative now. When we start designing something, this is all based off a conceptual, very conservative, that sort of stuff, um. With the Markland Walk, we were at one point eight million total, and again, this is very conservative numbers. Um, there's ways to design around budget and stuff like that if need be, and while we were applying for. Funding, hoping that it would be more of a hundred percent funded on the design, you know, we figured that we'll swing for the fence and go for designing a fishing pier at the end of that too or something. So based on budgeting, you know, the amount of dollars and stuff that we can collect for this thing, I mean, we can sit, design around that stuff, like. If we're, if we're going for grant dollars, we wanna get as much as we possibly.
I think, you know, the new design format also includes the educational side. So like D N R and state agencies will assume that you're providing education while you're also, you know, making these improvements in your community, so. Just little things like that, that don't add too much to the budget, but they'll actually add a lot in the application as far as your competitiveness. Against, you know, other municipalities.
Robin.
Well, to me, this is very exciting because this is actually utilizing our natural resources that I really see for the future of Kiwanee. To me, that's, that's really exciting.
So I agree, um, I just wanna know how much committee, you know, committal we'll have to have going forward on the front end as far as funding.
The only thing we really, like, like if you, yeah, the only couple of things we really need as far as from the city and you guys itself is the um. Is the updated rec brand, and then making sure for sure that the, those two things are in the capital budget at some level. Um, because ultimately, like I said, L N R P through the fund for like Michigan, like we are funded. To do a lot of the, and and we've been working with Cedar Court too, we're funded to do a lot of the work, looking for funding, putting in the application, so it's really just making sure that. The pieces are in place. Um, to qualify, that's, that's the commitment that we need from the city.
In our effort that we've been helping with this, I've just been putting my time towards our advisory agreement. That we are really contracted, we have with you guys for that sort of stuff, or honestly, a lot of it's gone just to marketing, just to help the cause of things, um. We submitted a proposal to Heath last week um for the conference about the rec plan update, we're gonna move them out of, over to that, and I'm sure. Um, once we get to that meeting, then it'll be, you know, whatever committee level you guys decide or council meeting, whatever that that may be, just to kind of talk what that. Effort would be, but really that would be probably to get to the point of applying for these grants and everything, I would think that should really be the majority of, of the cost.
It's gonna be, most of the cost is gonna be that, the other piece is gonna be just uh amending C I P to add. Campground and marsh walk officially into the documentation. Um, they're sort of referenced kind of, but we wanna make sure that they're actually fully embraced in the C I P. Or some kind of, you know, prioritized, so we can actually include them. Uh, in this project, cause then that points to them and say, okay, this is part of your priority, so it's included as part of your capital infrastructure.
So then, a- at this point, we really don't need to take any action or anything, because we're gonna be moving forward through committee or whatever with the Harbor Master Plan, so.
All we just need to, yeah, we just, yeah, we just wanna make sure we're, you're on board with the idea that we're gonna update the outdoor recreation plan. We went through public property earlier uh on that discussion, so they're aware of it, we'll, we'll move forward with the proposal then. I'm assuming we're taking that to public property to authorize the proposal.
And that you're okay with us reaching out to D N R and contacting, you know, the state agencies, the first thing we need is very hard for them to reach us. And now as we get further along, of course, we'll come back to you and let you know if there's match requirements and how much that would be. Like I branded said, our time, you know, is. And those matches are the kind of income services, so that would reduce your cost, also anything you're doing like in the city um around those areas. This is part of capital improvement.
Alright, so we'll move on to nine C, request authorization to designate various public works equipment as surplus for bids or auction.
Um. Public Works and Marina staff requested authorization to put some material up for either closed bids or auction. I've listed them in your, in your um workup here, uh. Just to highlight them, two thousand one Ford Sterling single axle. With Monroe plow and wing, the nineteen eighty-six Max single axle rear loads beach garbage truck. Nineteen ninety-one Ford Sterling vacon vacuum jetter hydro excavation truck, the nineteen ninety-five GMC Sonoma from the Marina. An old scoreboard, which we don't know how old it is, the old playground equipment from the Father Marquette Park. Ellis Chalmers boosters pumps and one motor from when we did the uh lift station upgrades. Okay, the hydro turn one valve turner with station pumps there, there are the whole takeouts, it still work. Uh, and the yellow slide that was in the wood steel building, we have no idea where that came from, and then a table saw, some various other old equipment. Um. We just don't feel like we have to store them anymore, and we'd just rather get rid of them if we could. Um, Jeff's staff generally is suggesting just putting them on the auction site, seeing if we can get anybody to take them. Um. In the case of the vacuum jetter truck, we've. Uh, had some interest. I'll let Nate talk to, talk about if you're interested in finding out about that one.
Well, there's a local contractor that reached out to me to take a look at the truck, knowing that it was gonna be potentially coming up for weather surplus or sealed this. He, uh, the contractor showed extreme interest, um, he didn't mention a figure, but he said if it was up to him, he'd cut a check tomorrow for it. I just wanted to make sure that the council was informed of the interest and it's relatively timeframe interest, not saying that. This is the person we have to sell to, just that you get it or aware that there's a very committed potential buyer. And his interest is gonna be on a short time limit, just needs to make a move one way or the other. So, um, it would be more or less the council's decision, would you rather see the truck go to auction, whether it be via Wisconsin surplus? Um, see what it fetches there, the other option would be, we could do a sealed bid with that potential truck. Advertise it in the local paper, get the word of mouth out, and see what the highest bid was coming in on it. And like, you know, potentially two contractors and or local businesses. Give us the best shot. You, I've been, you know, you can be surprised on auction sites, you have way more than what you're thinking, if you get the right two people bidding against each other, it can also go the other way where. We probably, you know, we could have got this and. So you're more or less gambling either which way I suppose, but. I just felt the, the need to make the council know one of the potential interests.
Based on some conversations you and I had, uh Nathan, prior even thinking about what we all want to gather up here for these assets. Is if we were to go with that Wisconsin surplus. If you can find out more of the details on the procedure and how that goes forward, that's a big opportunity, right? Otherwise, we could do bids, like you said, on our own. And either way, I think if we give the discretion for the listed assets as listed, the discretion of staff as is a recommendation for a motion, I, I. That's kind of what I'm leaning towards, let them.
Nathan, what's the fee for the auction?
I haven't. Just because the public property conversation has hasn't passed, there was never, we never reported and or approved, so. Without having public properties formally back it again, I didn't, I'm a lot of that work on it.
That's, I don't know the answer is, I've seen personal stuff on there, and.
Reading that recommendation either way.
Typically, it's a tiered system, depending on how much you spend, it's so much percent buyers fee, so I think that's how they typically structure. I'm just unsure if there's an initial setup be for them to come out.
I don't think so.
And set up your page and advertise.
No, I don't remember paying anything, I'm, I'm pretty sure like Brandon said, it's more of a buyer's speed, because the purchaser or bidder ends up paying.
They have a recommendation either way. Uh, going to the Wisconsin surplus or.
I'm gonna just say, staff use their best strategy.
That's, um, I think that was the consensus from the Public Works Committee, was that. Let staff use their, you know.
That would be the motion that I would entertain is to authorize staff to pursue either Wisconsin auction posting or closed bids as recommended based. By the staff as requested by the council, and that would be for the uh list as provided of assets.
What's the motion?
Staff recommendation. We're gonna give authority to staff to either do a bids or the auction.
Okay.
With the items as mentioned in the list. I would entertain that motion. Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Blaha.
Yes.
Brewster. Anderson.
Yeah.
Opted all.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Conley.
Hi.
And Kathy Bronzam.
Motion carried.
You will report a fact, whatever the results are when, when all this is all done.
City deficit.
Authorize staff to post bids for road improvements for L R I P program and seal coating work.
Uh, yeah, Public Works is preparing to advertise bids for the following road projects, uh, resurfacing of hospital road from Bowmeister to the municipal border. Uh, which is partly funded by the state local road improvement program authorized funding. We received for twenty twenty-four, this is mandatory, this is stuff that they automatically hand us, it was our turn. Uh, which will involve a request to advertise for, for an asphalt hot mix purchase. And then also seal coating of two blocks of street, Harrison Street from Milwaukee to Maine and Lake Street from Ellis to Kilborn. Uh, paid from a bunch of funds in the general fund for Public Works. Uh, we referred the draft bid advertisements to city engineer recommended, including a measurement of area covered with steel coating. Uh, so that we get a, everybody's bidding on the same assumption, um. This continuation of program last year involving Fourth Street. To at least pick up some stretches of local street, either repave them entirely as in the case of hospital road or. Seal coating, which can extend the life of those streets uh up to ten years. So, uh, Public Works Committee reviewed these proposals and recommended moving council for authorization. Um, and staff recommend, requests authorization to advertise bids as revised per city engineer's recommendation.
I think Mr. Mayor, Nathan, could you just give a quick synopsis, it's a different type of seal coating than we're normally using, correct?
Correct, so it's not just like a hot oil over the top existing asphalt, they use a cool, cold mixed paper laid, is the estimate that I've received the judge, my budgeting off of. Um, so that's what it's geared towards, they literally take a paper, reshape the um surface of the road, so it has its proper crown, it'll shed water. It'll compact it, um, if this particular company is the bidder, but this is the process we're shooting for. They'll lay over the hot oil seal, and then they put a black granite eighth inch chip over it. It's had a pretty good success in the neighboring uh cities, have had. Very positive reports from other public officials that, you know, decide to go with this on a regular basis. And like Keith had mentioned, it's a good way without, you know, knowing that you can't afford to replace the utilities underneath that are in need of replacing. So when justifying necessarily doing a deep, we know, we paved like we've done on Fourth Street last year, this is a similar way to get. A smoother road for a decent amount of life expectancy and a less cost to asphalt. So that's the reason that we're looking at the uh seal coating, um. Hospital Road, like Keith had mentioned, that's an L R I P program, it's through the entitlement fund, so we get this every other biennium. Um, actually, Mr. Straylo, when he was in the Public Works position, um secured this funding. So this is a, it's, we need to have a project done and submitted reimbursement by June thirty of the twenty twenty-five. Um, so I'm just continuing on with that entitlement that Brad has, would give us roughly thirteen thousand dollars and change back from the state for purchasing the hot mix.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to advertise for bids for asphalt purchase for the hospital road resurfacing project. Using L R I P funds and for seal coating projects on Harrison Street and Lake Street. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Nine E, authorize an Eagle Skull project at the Water Tower property and Kiwanee Arboretum.
Um, city has been approached by Spencer Messman to prepare and place a new sign at the Water Tower property. Identifying the Kiwanee Arboretum of the property. Property that is identified primarily for the water tower, city's entrance signage on Marquette contains a series of trees that have identified informally as the Kiwanee Arboretum. Property, project is intended to identify the city's arboretum with an identification sign for the site. Pose was placed sign outside the right of way, size yet to be determined, intention was a single-sided sign, unless council wants otherwise. Uh, Mr. Messman has indicated he plans on doing the fundraising for the project on his own, and the installation will be done by Public Works. And other than the maintenance of the installation and the maintenance of the sign, including weeding around the sign, that's about all there's to this. Um. Staff, uh, sports their quest.
Spencer's not here, I take it?
No, so this is a, they brought forward the old tablet, so it was a. If you'd like a grant payment request, I guess, a very detailed review of the number, and the only cause I've received the city is very not to be. Potentially installing the post, you know, most likely to earn that, but um, maybe purchasing the post if, if he doesn't quite need this. And then just the included style of maintenance, whether it's weeding or the parks department would like to install some sort of landscape around it, in their eyes. You know, way before. Um, like I mentioned, the E, via email is something that should probably be updated if this is what we're gonna continue doing with the. Um, like I mentioned, the via email is something that should probably be updated if this is what we're going to continue doing with the arboretum, um, to my knowledge, it was put in sometime along. Or along Highway twenty-nine reconstruction and the water tower installation. Um, I'm not sure if you've been out there, some of the trees have been, have been removed as in Canadian cherries, they were diseased and the tree has trees become the ash core. So the species list should be updated, um, some of the plaques could potentially be updated and and the pamphlet that what, I don't know if these are even handed out anymore. If they are in existence, should potentially be updated if this is something we still choose to support and move forward with.
So you're okay with it, you don't know?
I reached out to Rural Water Association, had a couple of questions just regarding, you know, the municipal water tower source there and its proximity and putting a sign there, they didn't see any sort of issues with it, just seeing how our. Water tower is secured with a hardened door lock system.
I think you're right, though, we would want to be committed to updating things.
Could that be included in his project?
Well, his project, you know that, it's specific to what it is, and I don't want to put more on the kid than.
No, but they could.
I guess in the.
Yeah, they could include that in, and that wouldn't be that much more for him.
Can I ask him?
Yeah.
But I can, I can reach out to him and ask him, I guess what I'm looking for is just the support of the sign, so he can start drafting, he has roughly. I think there's eighteen months to for this to be moved, so this isn't like the last one where we're on a shorter timeframe. This one can take a little more time to get designed and.
My move, we authorize the Eagle Scout project by Spencer Nessman to proceed with the creation of a Kiwanis Ebrium sign to be placed at the Water Tower property.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Alright, item ten, consent agenda, items within the consent agenda will can be considered individually if the common council chooses to do so, so we've got, if I could do. Each designated letter as a group unless someone has something they want to pull out individually. Uh, if there is no objection, I would entertain a motion to approve ten A as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving ten A signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ten B, uh, again, as listed. If there aren't any questions or concerns, I would entertain a motion to approve ten B as presented.
I'll hold.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ten C, are there any questions concerning ten C class B retail licenses? I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
No, no. Second.
Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ten D, campground permits. Right, who wants to approve those as presented?
Almost.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ten E, temporary class B. Do we have a motion to approve those?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ten F, Dan Brown fireworks permit for Brown fresh July third, nine P M to eleven P M, is there a motion to approve? Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then G, financial reports, month ending April twenty twenty-four. Any questions on those reports? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Any questions? Please go ahead.
Wow, Brewster, Anderson, Optidol.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Conley.
Hi.
And Brown is absent.
Motion carried. Are there any announcements?
I have one before anybody moves on, um, so the Dollar General store has not submitted their, um, they submitted. Uh, partial application for removing their license. Zs, so, um, we may have to, I may be calling you guys up for a special meeting if they get me everything like they're supposed to, so that they can get approved before the end of June.
Okay, whatever we can do to facilitate.
Yep, well, I keep reaching out to them and I get no response.
Understood.
So. I'm.
That's totally different, totally different dollar story, we're having enough fun with the other one.
Oh, that's the other one.
Yeah, this is the one.
No, this, this is the existing one we're having problems with.
Okay, well. Alright, then, moving on to item eleven, are there any announcements?
There's a fundraiser, June uh twenty-ninth for Darlene Monper for, and um, July. Third, there was going to be one for Dan Brown also.
Okay.
So the. And I would like to say that Scott and I showed up at the senior um celebration and we each got a piece of cake. It was a great time.
Well done. Alright, item twelve, is there a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, motion carried.
Couple of drives already.